Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
I have to give you a notification.
Thank you.
That this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Act. I'll reintroduce you to the board. This is a new associate member. This is Donald Gurney. He is... I'm Alfred Gravel, James Bezakowski, Hans Wintrip, Patrick Callahan, and Tony Nacastro. I will tell you how the hearing is going to proceed. Usually Lisa Norman in, the board secretary, would be here to read the application, but this is a continuance, so it has already been done. So all of that is behind us. And I will... But I'll just give you the applicant... Well, again, we'll have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of any additional documents which you just provided. Thank you. You will again please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Not yet. Not yet. This is just how it will proceed. Board members again will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you were at the mic. There will be a public comment period. Again, anyone would like to speak, you come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address comments and questions to the board. And the board will go into deliberations. And there are required findings for any special permit. And they are: one, that it will not be injurious, dangerous to the public health, unduly hazardous because of traffic flow congestion, danger of fire explosion are the reasons; that it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood; that it will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness of an open use; it will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the public good. And let me just say that, again, this is a continuance from a hearing that was originally held on March 23rd. Then there was another hearing, a continuance to April 13th, and because we didn't have a quorum, we had to postpone to this day. So we're finally here. And the application, as Lisa had read it, is Dan's paving on 691 Chase Road. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to operate a contractor's yard for a paving company. The basis for this appeal for a special permit is found in the code of Lunenburg, 250 4.1L6. Again, Lisa Norman has already, the board secretary, has already read the application, and she also read a bunch of other submitted communications from some of the neighbors. Board found that it needed additional information, and that's why we had a continuance at that time. I will say that you have now provided a site plan along with a lot of other information. I know the board at the time had asked some questions to give you a feel about some of their concerns being chemicals on the property, or what type of things you're going to store, and was there going to be any asphalt? So there are a number of questions, and I will say that you sent information and I think answered most of those questions. I will read a few of them just so that we have some of those answers, and then I won't read them all, then we can go into the... Let the board speak. Okay, so part of the notes you sent was the office trailer that is currently on-site is temporary home base for our operations. While the permanent structures are designed and built, we will require use of the office trailer for six months to carry on daily operations. And we will consider that. All suggestions by... Suggested by one ZBA member researching oil and water separators and the cost involved, and it appeared that you are looking into that. The existing driveway and parking lot were installed without a permit, but this was due to miscommunication between the prior owner and the current owner and a misunderstanding of a special permit and site plan regulations in the town of Lunenburg. There was no intent malice, or we have removed all trucks and equipment from the property as instructed by the building department. We have been unable to relocate the temporary office trailer as of this date. And then you gave some detail on the actual contractor's yard, which I won't read through. But I think I'll just read some of the other information you sent through. A general description of a daily operation. Vehicles, equipment will enter our driveway from Chase Road, continue on to roadway to the back lot to park. Any vehicle repairs or maintenance will be performed in a garage bay. All paving services are performed off-site. All materials used for paving services are purchased off-site at an asphalt plant, example Keating's, then hauled to job site. Trucks and equipment are cleared and cleaned of unused asphalt and residue at the local asphalt plant for a fee. No hazardous chemicals are stored or used on this property. There will be... What is that, one and a half employees? Or one to five?
Yeah, no, one and a half.
One and a half, okay. From this property for 30 to 40 hours a week. And customers and potential customers are met primarily at the job site, potential job site. And it's the average of a visitor is one time per... I don't have the answer. Month, I guess. So with that, we would invite you back up and present any more information or anything that you would like to say.
No, just clarify. We have there one and a half staff on-site 30 to 40 hours a week. So basically, all of the staff, except one and a half, are off-site. They come in, they check in, they leave.
They leave, okay.
And then they come back.
All right.
And they leave again.
Anything else you'd like to add at this point, or...
Well, we realize that after... Or I realize, after speaking with Adam from... Oh, sorry, I'm blanking out on the department, planning department, that there will be changes to what's existing there that shouldn't have been there in the first place. And we're willing to do whatever it takes to get our equipment and get our operations up and running there.
Right.
As far as the oil and water separator, I started to look into that, and I'm just waiting on some information. And I think I was going to ask you or Adam to get the particulars. I actually have them written on there, and I can't remember them off the top of my head. There are certain size-wise, and there's a lot of things that I don't know.
Well, I think... A lot of things, well, I'm a plumber by trade, so there's a lot of things involved inside.
Right. So I'm wondering if...
And I don't think that's anything this board's going to condition. When you go to the planning board, they'll look at that. They may say that you need to have a wastewater, you know, survey done, and then they would tell you what you need to do.
The details.
They may say you either do or you don't.
Okay.
You know what I mean? But I don't think it... Like I say, there's... You still have to go to the planning board.
Right.
You still have to go to conservation.
Right.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add? Okay, with that, I'll open it up to the board for any questions they may have.
One question. It said on here, the general description of daily operations, there will be 1.5 employees operating this for 30 to 40 hours weekly maximum. And then on the next page, it says, "One part-time, five full-time."
So the...
I don't... You know, there's a complete...
Yep, that's fine. I get it.
Irregularity.
The... There are the... I'm there probably 30 hours a week in the office. We're not there, our temporary office now. Everybody else comes in, checks in, and leaves.
Gets a truck and goes, with the truck.
Correct. So there's usually just one person on-site for eight hours a day, if that. And, you know, a period of about 20 minutes in the morning, and 20 minutes in the evening when they return would be the additional people, the crew, just checking in and then checking out.
But still, that's the difference between 1.5 and one part-time and five full-time.
Well, that accounts for, let's say... Because I was also keeping in mind about the board of health and septic system and everything. The .5 would be if somebody from the crew comes in, needs to use the bathroom, or hang out and fixes time card or something. So I just... I averaged it out to 1.5. So there's one person there, usually, usually 30, no more than that, a week. And the other amounts would account for just people kind of stopping in the office to meet, talk, use the bathroom, whatever. Sorry about that.
But still, what you're saying and what's written here don't reconcile with the one part-time and five full-time.
Well, I'm sure I could have made it clear, but I think earlier in the...
Five full-time that...
Off-site.
Are off-site, but report to the office, is what you mean?
Correct.
Okay.
That would have been really great if I wrote it that way, but that's exactly what I mean. Yes.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. So I don't remember last time we were here, was... Did we know that the driveway was constructed... It's saying here that the existing driveway and parking lot were installed without a permit. Were we aware of that last time? I don't remember that last time.
I think that was...
Go ahead.
Yeah, that was a big thing for me to have included from day one, so I'm assuming... I don't have the original application with me.
Is that... So you were talking earlier about a conversation with Adam. Was that about, like, things will have to change if it goes, if you get...
Yeah, we knew that anyway, like, right from the beginning when we connected with Casey from the building department, when he informed us. That's where we learned this. So I'd been trying to get information from different departments to make sure I had everything for all you, and Adam happened to give me some good information about just generally what you're looking for, and...
So on this form right here...
I don't even know how you guys got that.
Which one... How far does a paving go up? Like, I mean, I remember going over there and taking a look at it originally before the first hearing.
Right.
But is it all... Like, what... This where you're going to have your big trucks and stuff out in the very back?
The very back.
Is that there now?
No.
No, so you haven't paved that?
Right.
You only really paved up to where the trailer was?
Correct. That first lot...
Yeah, is done.
And the driveway.
Okay.
Yeah.
But did... Never mind, okay. I wasn't aware that the driveway wasn't... Was just put in.
Yeah, that was... That really...
You're in the business.
Hmm?
I said, "You're in the business." Of paving, right? So...
Yep.
That's the easy part.
And then the only other thing that I saw, and I meant to bring it up last time, and I didn't bring it up, but I did see it on my notes, was that on the application itself, when you went through and did all the questions...
Yes.
Question number four, I think, said, "Has the use already begun?" And you checked "no," but really, it should be "yes."
It should have been "yes."
Yeah.
And I was... Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Patrick or Tony?
I just have one quick question as far as... I think I probably understand it, but office, you, everyone checks in, leaves, comes back, time clock's out, garage is, I'm assuming, just like extra equipment and things that need to be inside and a space to, like, work on something that...
Right. That garage bay would be specifically for...
Pretty small.
Maintenance and repairs.
Yep, yep. And then everything just parked in the back.
Which is another account for the .5 people being there, so...
Right, yeah. Okay. So that's just an average of over the whole period of time?
Correct, yeah.
Roughly that many people there. Not, yeah, not half a person.
Once we're up there, I hope to be there more, but...
Yeah, understood, understood.
I have one last question, Mr. Chairman. I just forgot to ask. So I noticed that, you know, you're saying that you're not storing any hazardous chemicals or anything like that on the property. I'm going to give you a scenario. You guys do your paving on Friday night, and the asphalt place is closed, and you have extra asphalt. Do you bring that back to the area, dump it, and then get rid of it? So you keep it for a minimal amount of time on-site and get rid of it, excess asphalt? Like, do your trucks come back with it or no?
That... We avoid that at all costs.
Sure.
Because if asphalt is left in the trucks, it's horrible to get out.
Yeah, okay.
It becomes another, like...
So really, there's no dumping that's going to happen after you guys do a job?
Correct.
You want to dump it wherever, or you get rid of it before you come back to the...
Right. And we're pretty... We have a good relationship with Keating's.
Sure.
And there's a couple other paving companies out southern way that...
Okay.
We're aware of their... When they close and when we can get there.
So really, you're just operating trucks out of there, doing your jobs, coming back, and just essentially maintenance and storage?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you still on a timeline of six months to build a new building and the garage, or...
It would probably... It would be six months from the point that we're able to get up there.
To do it.
Yes. And start our operations there.
So you're talking about after you get all... You know, get through the planning work, conservation, and then you think you'll need about six months?
Yeah, and it may be less, but I don't want to cut our...
Yeah, I mean, my... You know, we don't want to stop you or hurt your business or anything else. I mean...
We appreciate that.
You know, we hope your business grows. In fact, I hope that what you've got planned for the parking is appropriate for now, but also for, you know, if you get new equipment.
Right.
If the use changes, then of course you have to come back. But we can give you condition, a period of time. We can save from the time that you get your final permit. I guess I'm asking, is it, you know, six months in today's conditions with contractors being hard to get and, you know, a lot of builders are busy and everything, is that a...
Which I agree with 100%.
Supply chain.
The timeframe that I... Of six months that I put there is my ideal. That's my ideal. That's realistic if, as you say...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If everything...
If it's... Six months is realistic after you get your... Have all your permits.
Correct.
Okay. Which we don't know what date that is.
Hopefully soon.
But we can work around that. Okay. I think a lot of the concerns last time were concerned with, you know, where you were going to park all of these trucks, what you were bringing in with you, you know, about repairs being done in the yard. That is one question. If, you know, you don't have a garage right now, so where would those repairs be done? I mean, what kind of repairs would there even be, really?
They're basically maintenance, maintenance, weekly, monthly maintenance things. Repairs generally, depending on what it is. We have a truck right now that needs a new hood and a new fender because of a fender bender. That's going to be done at the yard that we're at now. If it's anything more involved, we have... We do have a mechanic on-site, but he's limited in what he can fix. So he would... He'll do maintenance, like, you know, transmission, brakes, and what have you. But if it's anything more involved, we usually go with absolute auto.
Okay.
Because they have the space, and they've taken care of our trucks forever.
Okay. Yeah, because without a garage, it's, you know, you can't really be doing them on-site if it's oil or anything like that.
Yep. That's why I said six months is realistic. If it's sooner, I'll be very happy that we have structures.
Okay, we would actually, like I say, we can make conditions. I mean, like I say, that our concerns were any chemicals on the site. You've already answered that. You say you have no chemicals. And to Hans' question, bringing back asphalt on a Friday night, you say that doesn't happen.
It's a nightmare if it...
And I can understand that it probably doesn't, because it probably would be ridiculous trying to get it out after that. How late is Keating's and places like that open to be able? Can you just go in there and do that by yourself, or is it happening?
For the most part, but we don't. There's usually always someone there when they go back, and we promote that. We would rather they check in with someone before they do anything there. And they do. And it hasn't been a problem. So, I mean, the whole plant may not be running at that, at 6 o'clock.
Right, right.
But there's always somebody there, like at the scales or what have you.
There's somebody there that will...
Yep. And that's what we promote for our drivers, is make sure somebody's there, just for, you know, our own liability and so on.
Okay. I'm going to ask one question, and that's just kind of a curiosity question. On driveways, like, you know, on roads, how they take that grinder and grind? Do they ever do that with driveways, where they grind that, bring it, have it remade into asphalt?
Well, we're actually... Driveways, not so much. There's a parking lot up at St. Boniface in Lunenburg that they're doing, and they're going to... That's exactly what they're going to do. They're going to re-grind, compact, and just use it. I don't see that very much with driveways. Doesn't mean it doesn't happen, but...
The driveway, right. Yeah, probably just not...
It can be more expensive, believe it or not.
Oh, I believe it.
Because of the machine and the apparatus necessary.
Yeah, I'm just wondering. But when you bring it, they kind of, you know, the... When you break... Tear up a driveway and put a new one in.
Can you... I'm sorry, could you...
When you take up a driveway, you bring that old driveway to Keating? Is that where it goes?
The asphalt, yes. We'll take the loom back or anything that's underneath it if it's just loom.
Okay.
Which it usually is.
All right, but they...
Or the dump if there's weird things under there, you know?
Okay. And then Keating's just re-grinds it and...
I don't know what they do with it, but they charge us a very... It's a very small fee, but...
Okay.
They may recycle it for all I know. That's a good question, actually. I'll ask them next time I talk to them.
All right.
Public.
And with that, do you have anything else you want to... Over? No? Okay. With that, I will ask...
Can I just ask one question? Mr. Chairman, sorry. Can I just ask you, were you at Elm Street in Pittsburgh before?
Yes.
So I would just bring this up because I don't know anybody from Dan's Paving, and I've never done any business with them, so I'd just say that. But I work for the people that took that building over, and if, as far as neighbor concerns, that building had the neighbor, like, right here.
In the blue three-decker?
And right here, yeah.
Yeah.
So I would just... If people have concerns about them being a good neighbor, that's... They were on top of each other in that building, so...
Yeah, they were. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know how you guys got all this stuff in there.
Well, we'll be... We're... We just feel thrilled with the opportunity to possibly run our business out of Lunenburg and off of Chase Road.
Yeah.
We got... We moved to a better place after that.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, that was kind of nightmarish.
I can imagine. Those close quarters.
Yes, very.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, and with that, if you have nothing more, I'll open it up to the public if you would like to speak.
Thank you.
Give your name and address, please.
Certainly, Clark Knudsen, 487 Holman Street. So as with the original application, a couple of questions that I had, I posted or posed before. How would this impact the water runoff into adjoining properties? How would it impact potential groundwater in terms of... I want to protect my well water, not saw and private well. So there was that. In terms of other concerns about noise and/or dust, like, that seems pretty reasonable at this point. So I was just hoping that those concerns could be mainly the water and the oil separator. Like, I will say this, from the initial application, it's now been five weeks. What efforts... How long would it take to get that property sized and scoped? In terms of adherence to instructions from the board, I would ask, in what the response letter that was previously dated April 13th, there have been two weeks further, it says "as of this date." Have they had adequate time to move the office, or have they been granted leniency to not need to move their office as had previously been instructed?
The trailer you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm going to guess that we're going to condition the trailer to a date that it has to be removed. As far as the wastewater, I believe under the planning board that they will do a wastewater survey of that area, and they will require that of them. I can put it in as a condition in odds as well. But I would... I prefer to have the planning board do it. They're much more familiar with this than what this board is. We're really concerned with the use at this point. They'll get more into real details like the wastewater and all of that. But... So you should actually plan on attending their meetings as well. They'll also have to probably, because there is some wetlands, I'm sure they may have to go to conservation as well, which will also have the same concerns.
Oh, great. No, thank you. Like I say, those are just concerns I wanted to raise. And I guess the other question I would pose to the board, the drawing on the site plan that shows a driveway, does that reflect the current driveway, or where would the driveway actually be? Because if it was put in improperly...
I believe it will... Is the same... You have to go through the board.
Okay.
You have to come back up and go through the board. No, you can just come up and do the mic because...
Just saying you'd have to direct it through here. I missed the mic.
Yeah, just...
Feel free.
Whatever you want to say, you both stand there.
Well, no, I'd like to say, but yeah, just so everyone can get the recording.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. So the site plan that I just passed out to everyone, sorry, I didn't give you one. That is... That's not the drive... The existing driveway that's there now.
That's not the existing?
No.
Right, okay.
It's moved a little bit so that within the wetlands, we had them go up and flag.
Okay, so they've already been there and flagged?
Just asking.
Okay. Now, there was some mention of flags being there prior to?
Hmm?
I read something about there was somebody had already flagged some of that area?
We don't know who.
Nobody.
Yeah.
Somebody...
But the... So what you're saying is the existing driveway is not going to stay there. It's going to be based on what your plan is, based on the wetlands.
Right. And I mean, it's not too far off, but it's...
Right.
That plan is that. That's what's going to be happening. That is the plan.
No, that's the end of my comments, so no, thank you.
Okay. You're quite welcome. Thank you for coming.
Can I give a... Yeah.
Okay. There's no other questions from the board? I will entertain a motion. Okay, um, if there's no other questions from the board, I will entertain a motion. One of the things is I would like to somehow condition, uh, the, we're not, we don't have to worry about setbacks, there's nothing being required or asked for, uh, but what we do need to condition is the trailer being used as a temporary, and things like, uh, you know, not bringing asphalt back, not having any chemicals, um, things like that, so when you make the, uh, the motion, I would like that incorporated into it.
So, Mr. Chairman, just on the, I mean, me personally, you know, I think, obviously, they didn't know that they, they couldn't run a, a shop out of there, so they took everything but the trailer. I think it's not a, a bad site for what the use is.
Right.
You know, another month or so, those, that folly is gonna, you know, come in, you won't even see that the trailer's there, as long as it's not being used and it's not against the bylaw, I have no, I had no problem just leaving it there until they figure it out, because I think what's gonna happen is, if they do go through all the boards and they get their permits, they may be able to have a temporary trailer there while they're building there or in the, you know what I mean? So it's a matter of, now you, now we're asking them to remove it and then bring it back, and, and my personal feeling is that it's not really doing any harm as long as it's locked, I mean, they've cleaned up the site, there was a dump, I mean, you can clearly visit, it'll be, you know, walking that site that, that people were dumping stuff there, so they're trying to be good neighbors, I think they'd be good neighbors, and if they're not good neighbors, you know, it's a matter of neighbors picking up the phone call and calling the building department and the building inspector, bringing them back in front of the zoning board.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's the only, that's, I mean, I have, I, I don't know whether we have to condition the, the, um, the trailer, but...
Um, we have to give them some temporary relief on the trailer, because it really, but, you know, it should be, it should not be there right now.
Right, right.
So we gotta give them some sort of, you know, we can say six months after their final permit.
Yeah, okay.
Um, the other things, like, would you, would you remind, just one, one more question if you would, um, just about lighting and security. Now, I know you said you're gonna have a, a lock date...
Mm-hmm.
At the, at the entranceway, and there will be a key for the emergency vehicles and unitile, I believe, who has a right-of-way across the property?
Correct.
Okay, uh, what, what about lighting? Is there gonna be any lighting at night that's gonna...
Yes, we, um, we have purchased, um, some solar lighting, not a lot, 'cause we wanna see how it, how it operates in, at the site, and if it, if it operates and does the job we want by illuminating, you know, the areas that we want, then we'll probably purchase more, but there, we're trying to go all solar with that, and cameras.
So there will be up, uh, lighting up around?
Oh, yes, yeah, and that's for our security as well.
Just for security, okay.
We've already found like, um, an office chair, like just doodads, people still dropping off even though it's, you know, dumping there, so we're just...
Oh, yeah, that's what I was thinking, this, you know, people made a dump out of it.
Yeah, but yeah, we'll have, definitely lighting is on our top priority in a gate, just for our own security and...
Okay, it just can't be a choice of off, off-site.
No, it'll, it'll, no, it won't, I know what you mean.
I'm sure it won't be, you've got a fairly big site, what is it, like four and three-quarter acres or something like that?
Yeah, we can only use probably a third of that.
Right.
But that's fine, I like the wetlands for other reasons.
Okay. Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the special permit to operate a contractor's yard at 691 Chase Road with the following conditions, that, um, the trailer be removed six months from all the approved, uh, board approvals to commence, and then, um, with the secondary conditions that no asphalt be stored, stored on site and that no hazardous materials be stored on site.
Very good. Do I have a second? With that, I'll call for a vote.
I just, I, I, I'll say, I, Mr. Chairman, I will say that just to the, to the butters' concerns about the wetlands.
Yeah.
Those, those concerns are gonna be taken up by the planning board, the conservation commission, they have the expertise to be able to tell, they'll be able to direct the applicant of what they need to do and what they can't do, so, on the site, as, in addition to lighting, not permeating off the site and coming onto a butters, so, just, so you have that.
Okay.
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye, okay, um, yeah, it has been approved, so with that, I have to read, um, the post decision for a special permit. The special permit is granted with contingency that petition complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions, and non-compliance to such conditions may result in the revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within fourteen days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to the superior court twenty days after the decision is filed within the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that twenty days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds, and no special permit shall take effect unless, until it has been recorded. The special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. With that, good luck with your business.
Good luck.
Okay, and with that, uh...
I'll make a motion.
No other business?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Second, to the all in favor?
Aye.
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 And with that, the, uh, hearing is over.